This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, East Hampton. Welcome to a regular session meeting of the East Hampton Public Schools School Committee. We are going to roll call.
Megan Harvey here.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were looking at me to do it. No, I was, I'm gonna, Walter.
What?
You're gonna kick us off, my friend. We're gonna begin with our student representative who is joining us at the big table with a placard. Walter Baker, you can say here, present, or any other term of your choosing.
Present.
Thank you, Walter. Tim?
Tim St. John, present.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric's here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Laura Scott, present. Linda?
Linda Burdick here.
Mayor Derby?
Uh, here.
Uh, Sam Hunter is joining us remotely. Sam?
Sam Hunter, present.
Yes. So for the audience at home and joining us in person, Sam is... Say again?
Did you say yourself?
I did.
Okay.
I think Laura Scott, present.
Yes.
Remains present, will continue to be present.
Yes.
Uh, Sam Hunter will be joining us remotely, will be fully participating in the meeting, except cannot vote, because that's the law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that if you're joining us remotely, you can't vote.
I know that.
So, just so there's no confusion.
I know that.
Uh, we are gonna begin with announcements.
Secretary.
That's me. Um, I don't have any correspondence to report, and we do have something that's gift-ish. We don't have to vote to approve it, but we wanted to recognize.
Ooh.
We just wanted to thank the Polish National Credit Union, who provided lunch to staff at Mountain View and to here at the central office staff at Fifty Payson on September 2nd, during a professional development day. It's one way that they wanted to reach out and to support the work of East Hampton Public Schools, since food is something we typically can't pay for and provide for our staff, and it's something that they can do. So we just wanted to publicly thank Polish National Credit Union for supporting the work of East Hampton Public Schools.
Great.
Thank you.
Their closest branches, right in Southampton on College Highway, everybody.
That kind of stuff makes a big difference. If you're gonna be in professional training all day.
Yeah, get some good food.
To have some food, it really makes a big difference.
Wonderful. Student representative update. Do you wanna drumroll?
No.
Should I get a glitter cannon?
What do you mean?
No.
Have at it, Walter.
All right.
First, you can just explain who you are, where you're from, what you're doing here.
Hi, my name is Walter Baker. I'm the president of the East Hampton High School Student Council, and I'm here to give an activity report for what our council's up to.
Excellent work.
So, we've only been in for like a couple of days now, so, you know, I'll just kind of give like a little overview of what we're thinking the year should look like.
Sure.
So, this year, we're having, we're centering all of our projects around four main committees. We have the Student Voice Committee, which is pretty self-explanatory. We're, they're gonna have more of a job this year to be focused on surveying the entire school, and we'd also like to, uh, we'd also like to run a student summit, uh, which was an idea that was brought, um, by our new superintendent, Dr. Balch. And then we have the Service Committee, which is gonna be focused on our pretty popular Kids' Night Out fundraisers. And actually with that, um, we're hoping to run seven Kids' Night Outs this year, and...
Can you remind us with the Kids' Night Out as well, sir?
Sure. The Kids' Night Out is an event where parents can drop off their kids, and we essentially provide structured childcare. And we have, um, activities, you know, kinda going on all over the place. There's structured games in the gym, games out in the café commons of the high school. We have a movie, and they get food, and it's pretty great. Everybody really enjoys having those. But since we're hoping to run seven separate events this year of just Kids' Night Out, we'd like to take the profits from one of those, um, nights and donate to the Special Olympics of Massachusetts. Um, another project that the Service Committee is really dedicated to is the Mobile Polar Plunge, which is also with the same organization. And we would bring that to the school, and students would get all like dressed up and, you know, hop into the cold water to raise money for the Special Olympics. And then we have our Spirit Committee, which is working on, right now it's working on Homecoming Spirit Week and our pep rally. And the Spirit Committee is really, the purpose of the Spirit Committee is really to improve the culture and climate of East Hampton High School. Um, what else do we have? Uh, in November, on November 6th, we'll be hosting the WMASC Fall Conference.
You're hosting?
We're hosting.
Congrats.
Which is very cool. I don't, I know they did it like a couple of years ago, but I haven't been there for that. And so the WMASC Fall Conference, oh, first of all, WMASC stands for the Western Massachus... Oh, my goodness. The Western Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, which is a smaller regional organization that's part of our state organization, MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association.
November 6? November 6?
Yes. Um, and basically what it is, is, uh, schools from all over Western Massachusetts that are part of the organization bring their councils to, this year, our school, and the Regional Executive Board runs a day of leadership-based workshops. So we'll be hosting all of them in November. And then we are also continuing our affiliation with those organizations, WMASC, MASC, and NASC, the National Association. And then speaking of the National Association, we're currently investigating attending the National Vision Leadership Conference in June of 2026.
That's excellent. Great. Uh, for the public, so Walter will be sitting at the table with us. Walter will be free to make comments and raise questions. The only thing we can't give Walter, you are not yet at the age of majority, my friend, but you're getting there, so he will not be a voting member, but he is a contributing member to our school committee for this school year, and we're really excited to have you and look forward to all of your input.
Thank you.
Great report. Uh, we are gonna move on to public comment. Um, if anyone, um, remotely or in the audience tonight has anything they'd like to share with us, please either come to the podium or raise your virtual hand. We'll give that just a minute. The requisite awkward 45 seconds. Let me see. I don't think so. Seeing no interest, we are going to close public comment and take things just a bit out of order from our agenda and invite our Director of Business Services to the podium to offer the finance and personnel update. Good evening, Julia.
Good evening. Um, first topic is the FY25 end-of-year financial report. Um, at last meeting, I told you that Jesse was, uh, on the verge of releasing files. Files have been released, and we've begun gathering information to do the end-of-year financial report. It is due on September 30th. So once that, um, report is filed, I will be able to present to the school committee, um, sort of the final close on the numbers for FY25. Um, second item is the summer food program. So the summer food service program concluded on August 15th, and they serve 1,256 breakfasts... breakfasts? Yes. And 1,545 lunches, for a total of 2,801 meals.
What is the percentage increase from last... We have, we've beat our record every year, and this year, you went and blew it out of the water.
It's a great question. I didn't crunch those numbers, but I can bring that to you next time.
I think you, I think we served, Sam, were we around 1,400-something total meals last summer?
I, I think it was around 1,400, because I remember thinking that the last time we had this presentation, we had already kept our, our numbers.
Exactly right.
It's been really cool to see this program growing, so thank you for that.
So if it was 1,400 last year, if our record, we doubled our enrollment, which is, I just get... Excellent work. That's great.
Yep, I haven't had a chance to meet with Ken LaPage, um, 'cause he's busy opening schools and getting the food service program up and running for the start of the school year. Um, but prior to the next school committee meeting, I'll meet with him, and we'll be able to sort of determine, 'cause I know last year, we were excited about the program's launch, but it was also not a... How do I say it? We lost money on the program last summer, um, just because of the, the way claims and things are run for that program that's different than our normal school lunch program. Um, so I'll be able to have some numbers for you and the impact on that in terms of the revolving fund balance for the Food Service Fund, um, at the next meeting.
Can you just briefly speak to the public about, when you say "lost money", can you just touch on the separation of the money that we have, the kitty that we have for food services, and how that can't be intermingled?
Yes. So any money that is earned by the food service program, that money can only be spent by the food service program. So for the past couple of years, um, right, we've been either a CEP district or, um, there have been either federally funded or accommodation of state and federally funded meals. So we have not charged students for meals for the past several years. So any money that, um, is brought in by that program, those revenues have to stay with that program. So we've been able to use those funds to replace aging equipment, to improve menu offerings. Um, but the, the math behind the reimbursements for the summer program is slightly different. Um, so it's, it's, the, the numbers are just a little tougher, and so a lot of times districts are able to run that program in a deficit because they make enough revenue during the school year to support the, that program and believe that eating that deficit is important, based on the service that it provides to our community.
And I, I have one more question.
Yep.
So currently, and looking forward at what we expect to happen next summer for the summer food funding, is that still, is that now, and will that still be federal funds? Have we already made some sort of transition to that being a state fund?
Um, everything is up in the air.
Okay.
For next year.
So currently, it is still federal funding?
Yep.
And the reason I ask is I would love for us to join with other neighboring communities to begin a petition to the government to create the allowance for grab-and-go, which was something that was available during COVID, and that's a regulation, I understand, that's set by USDA?
It is a USDA regulation.
So the question would be, does the petition go to the federal or state level?
It would have to go.
So for now, it would still go to the federal level?
Yep.
Okay.
And my understanding is that because all of our food service programs are actually run at the federal level, the state is an administrator of that, so there's sort of a pass-through.
Sure.
Grant language. And so in Massachusetts, right, our meals are fully reimbursable because the federal government is continuing to pay the rates they've always paid. Our state government is picking up the difference between the cost of that meal and the federal reimbursement rate. And the state has thus far committed to fully funding that program. There was a supplemental line item in the FY25 and the FY26 budget to fund, right, full, free, universal school meals to all students in Massachusetts. My understanding is that the state government has voiced their continuing commitment to that, but we don't, we won't know what FY27 looks like until they start budget discussions in the spring.
Great. Thank you for that deep dive, going down that rabbit hole with me.
Yep. At a second, our next item on the agenda are some grant updates. Um, last month's meeting, I told you about Prism 2, which supported grades four and five. We've also been awarded Prism 3 in the amount of $274,000, right, to support elementary literacy initiatives in grades pre-K through three. Um, that's gonna include, um, the literacy curriculum, evaluation, implementation, a lot of rigorous coaching, and a lot of professional development for our staff, so we're very excited about that, um, program. Uh, we also received a grant, uh, the FY26 Hate Crimes Prevention Grant, in the amount of $40,000. Um, we're gonna be using that grant to implement an evidence-based plan focused on initiatives, including the Bridge Builders Mediation Program for elementary students, intergroup dialogue for middle and high school students, and customized bias response toolkit development with the district equity team.
Where it says "intergroup dialogue for middle and high school GSA students",
Yep.
Um, is it just particular to those, to those club members, or how do we know what that looks like?
So for that, that particular aspect of the grant, it is focused on those two GSA's.
And remind me, I know that I think that the, the algorithm is, or the, I'm sorry, the acronym is the same, but the words behind it have been updated, so can somebody... Walter, can you remind me what GSA stands for today? Nope, caught you with pants down. Anybody else? Sam? GSA. It used to be the Gay Student Alliance.
Gay Student Alliance?
Gender and Sexuality Alliance.
Thank you! I knew it was something else. Gender and Sexuality Alliance.
I had that answer for it.
Okay.
Good job.
Okay. Thanks, Jess. So, excellent. That's very exciting. That's great.
Um, next I know on the agenda is substitute custodial hourly rates. So I was approached by Larry Carnes, our Director of Facilities and Maintenance. They have an open substitute custodial position, because our substitute custodian has been promoted to fill a vacancy in the department. And he has not been able to recruit anybody into that position. Currently, that position pays $15.30 an hour. And so he has requested me to approach you all in your role to, um, consider increasing that rate. So I, um, put out a survey, um, through my lister to other regional business managers and asked them what they currently pay their substitute custodians. Um, rates in the area range anywhere from $15 an hour to $24.91 at the top. There's a range. Um, Larry has requested that we perhaps think somewhere in the $18 an hour range in order to get people, um, into those positions. Um, the substitute custodian rate is not included in the collective bargaining agreement for the custodians.
What is the, can you remind me of the base hourly pay that we agreed to in, uh...
2314.
And that says of year two, or...
That's currently for this year.
Is 2314, correct. And so he's asking for the substitute position to be raised to 18? One, do you have a question?
How often do we need to hire a substitute custodian? How frequently?
It's to cover vacations.
Okay, so, yeah, so fairly frequently. So this is almost like a full-time position for someone?
I, no, um, I don't think it's full-time, but there, there are gonna be like, in the beginning of the year, a little bit heavier, and if we have after-school activities, we can use the substitute instead of paying overtime.
Yeah, just trying to see what we're really looking at in terms of hours in a year.
I think it's probably fluctuated year to year, based on, right, people's, right, how much vacation time they take, if there's overlap, if, you know, if the flu goes through a building and all the custodians are out. Yep.
Is it a per diem?
No, is it hourly rate?
And is it on-call, or is it?
Yep. Yep.
And they have no other, no other benefits offered? It's just the hourly rate?
Correct. Okay.
Right.
So I think there's two different approaches to it. We can sort of discuss a specific number and vote on and approve a specific number that then goes into the policy or the list that we have of approved substitute rates. Um, another option which some districts have used is they choose a percentage begged, or pegged to, um, the first step rate in the contract. And that way, that number advances over time, right, to sort of keep pace with inflation, cost of living, and those things, and without me having to come back to you all as a group to approve that rate. And, you know, spoiler alert, um, this is the approach I'm going to suggest that we take for a lot of our substitute rates.
And remind me again of what you said, the base starting rate is 24...
2314.
2314.
So, uh, I've crunched the numbers for you. You can put your calculator away, Laura.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, so 70% of that rate would be 1620. 75% of that rate would be 1736, which is what two other districts use that benchmark number. Um, 80% would be 1851. 85% would be 1967. 90% would be 2083. And 95% would be 2198.
Okay.
I apologize for not including this in your packet, but I forgot.
That's quite all right.
We're good.
Can you read me the 80% one more time?
80% is 1851.
I would be a terrible poker player.
What would we be basing the, the idea on?
So the idea is that the substitute custodian rate for each year would be based on 80%, or whatever percent you guys choose of the Step 1 rate in the custodial contract.
Right.
So as that contract advances, the substitute rate would advance also to keep pace with inflation, cost of living, and those things. So the rate would roll over every year to a new rate based on that new rate in the contract, without us having to have this conversation every year.
Right, right. What I, I guess what I mean is, what are we basing, what are we basing the idea of, of what percentage we're going to want to achieve every year?
The percentage would be, would be the same. So I guess the question to us is, where do we set that value?
Right. Why, like, why would we think that the substitute custodian is 70% of, or 75%?
Right, right. By 70 or 80. So we're being given, the only information we have today is that neighboring communities often strike 75%, which would put us below what Larry is recommending of $18 an hour, slightly less competitive, and it's a difficult position to fill and hold, because it's weird hours, it's on-call, it's, you know.
Right.
And often, it's the entry door to get them fully on staff.
All of the same work that would be done, just in, as a different human, and probably not all of the best.
Right, and also not being a member of the collective bargaining unit and having other benefits that members of the bargaining unit have.
Right, right. Okay, yeah.
So they'd be the first person promoted or brought in, presumably, you know?
Presumably, yeah, for sure.
Yep. Um, to give you some context, right, local districts around us, Ludlow, their current rate is 17. Westfield, it is 1734. South Hadley, it is 18. Pittsfield, it is 1954 for first shift. And it is 2149 for second shift, just to give you some close comps. I have some other Eastern Mass comps as well, but I don't think they're relevant to us.
Oh, those are our, those are the hourly rates?
Yes.
Anybody else have a question? Sam? Oh, Sam, I'm sorry. I totally forgot you were there. Go ahead.
It's, it's so unusual that somebody says that about me. Um, I, uh, I was just wondering, is there a, um, I hear that the recommendation is about $21 an hour, but as you pointed out, um, that if you were going to do 70% or 80%, that would be significantly below that. And I'm just wondering, is there a downside to having to just do that? Just the 100% of that starting, um, amount for, for, for treating them?
I think members of the bargaining unit might not like that someone who's not a member of the bargaining unit is getting paid the same rate. Potentially. I don't want to speak for them, though.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just trying to think of like, 'cause from my perspective, that, it just seems like that's a position that we always have trouble filling. And, um, I, I mean, I feel, I've heard about it every year that I've been involved here, and so my inclination is, I like the idea of time, but to a rate that you have to change it. That way you don't have to change it. I, I don't really, you know, I, I personally, it's, it's a budget support situation. I'm just being 100% of the, um, that, I'm saying rate, but I think somewhere around, you know, 95, 95.
Okay. Couple of thoughts of somebody who sat on that collective bargaining session. Uh, firstly, the custodians was one of very few areas that we targeted because of the inequity of their pay compared to neighboring communities. So they recently had one of the most significant increases in that new three-year contract that we signed. So I think when we are looking at that current rate being so low, that's part of what that was. That substitute position was of a piece with the entire custodial staff, um, that was underpaid, to put it frankly. I will also say, I absolutely agree with Julia that the collective bargaining unit will not support the idea that, um, a probationary employee or a substitute employee be paid what they paid. They will circle back to us immediately and demand another increase. And we've just offered one that we felt was really substantial and really fair. So that would be my argument about, so I would like to sit somewhere around 80%, but I'm, I'm not tied to that, and I'd be interested to hear other people's perspectives. Go ahead, Linda.
For whatever reason, 80% is just what's kind of sticking with me. I feel that, and I kind of base that on, I, I originally had already thought that the collective bargaining unit is not going to want to have the same salary as that. I was kind of looking at what I felt, just in my mind, based on only, you know, these discussions, is that 80% seems to me, that's pretty close to what, you know, that is, that that seems to be a fair salary in terms of what the recommendation is. And that's, that's kind of where I am. And I, but I really want to say, I really like doing this so that we don't have to keep coming back year after year after year and talking about numbers, because that number will just be increasing along with the others. So that's my thought.
Sure. Sam, I'll get to you in just a second. Go ahead, Mayor.
I was just thinking, I mean, it sounds like there's difficulty retaining and, and keeping this position filled. Um, is, would it make sense to look at having a, a starting point, say 75 or 80? And then if the person stays over, uh, you know, a year or, you know, whatever period of time, then they get a bump up to the next, like, 5%? So start off at 75%, they stay and, and are reliable for a year of subbing. The next year, they would bump up to 80. So that way, we could like work on that retention piece. I don't know if that's too complicated, but it just seems like it might be a way to help the retention piece having a, a carrot at the end of the stick.
Shh, I have thoughts. Julia, go ahead.
So if we set it at that rate, when the year changes and the new contract goes into place July 1, they would automatically get a raise.
Right.
Right? So they would get the same COLA adjustment in the salary scale as the other custodians. So that, that 80% or whatever number we settle at will be a moving target. So if they're here for a full year, even a partial year, they're, as long as they continue with us, every July 1, they would potentially get a raise.
Also, the incentive in my conversations with these folks was to get some, not to retain, but to attract. That's been the problem. Once they attract that person, they're almost always promoted up and into the staff. The problem has been attracting them initially. Um, that was my, is that what Larry communicated with you?
Yep.
Anyway, uh, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I have two thoughts. First is I, for me, I completely agree with tying it to, um, whatever percentage it is tying it to the graduating, um, rates as they go. But also, um, my, my thoughts are a bit like squirrels, so I might get this other one back. Um, but I, I feel that as, as, as high as we can tolerate and realistically think that we're not offending the people who are, who are doing this completely for a living, um, and then as high as the budget will tolerate within that, I think is a safe thing. Instead of just kind of winging out a number, you know, I think that we should just really consider to give, of course, as much as we can, because the money isn't, you know, the money's there for people to, to earn and make a living.
I'm sorry, Tim.
That's all. Thanks.
That's a great point. Sam?
I was, I was just wondering if somebody could remind me what the rate that we're tying it to is, because I didn't...
Spit, you gotta say that again. That was a little, say that.
Oh, what's the number that we're tying it to? Did you say it was 21 an hour, or is that...
2314 is the Step 1 rate.
22.
2314 is the Step 1 rate in this year's custodial contract.
It will go up next year, because we also gave them a COLA, so a year-over-year increase.
Yep.
Tied to them.
Right. So the 80%, for me, how I landed at that, that was a bit higher than one of our closest competitor, is the wrong word. Sister City, South Hadley. So we have very similar demographics, we have similar tax base, we have similar assessed value, all of that kind of of a piece. So we'd be beating them a little bit in that percentage, which feels good. And also, not so high, again, 'cause the custodians that we talked with talked a lot about a lot of years on the job, and it took them a long time in working with us to get where we felt they were being paid fairly.
Sure.
So we don't, I, I don't want to buoy the probationary position up too far too fast.
Yeah, sure. I don't, in my opinion, I don't, like, I agree with that, and I think that's great. But I, and I think that achieving something going forward means that it's kind of, you know, the new benchmark for everything.
I'll tell you what they would rather. They would rather we create another position, another full-time position. We don't have it in the budget today, but I've been begging for it for three years, and that's my next agenda. So every increase we give for this...
Just looking at the face.
Robs from the opportunity, like, that delays when we can get what they really, really want, which is another full-time position on the custodial staff.
Yeah, I mean...
I'll, I'll do one. I'll just, it sounds like we're pretty far below right now our competitors around us, so I think if we're gonna make a move, it should be something, if we can withstand it, that's substantial enough, that if we make this move and then jump it up, and it's still slightly below our competitors, it's not gonna draw people still. I mean, if you're looking for a job and you have two choices, and one pays more, you know, that's where you're gonna go, most likely. So if we could make it somewhat above, you know, in that $18 range, which seems like 80% fits nicely, if that's something we can swing, I think that makes the most sense to me.
You're fine, Mayor.
Sam was first, and then you took it. Sam?
Um, so just looking at my calculator, um, if we do 80%, Um, so just looking at my calculating, um, if we do 80%, it's like $18.16ish and.
1851. 1851.
1851, right? And then 85% is 1916. So um, it feels like to me there's a pretty big bump between those two. Um, I I would be okay with either. I mean, I could, 85, obviously, which is a little bit of whatever. Um, but you're right, if these are the ones we need.
Um, Tim?
The only question I have is, is this going to be reviewed again next year?
It can be reviewed however often we want to, because this doesn't go in a contract, so we don't go back to the union. This is just a decision at our discretion.
Goes on the agenda. I think it's on the agenda. Yeah, that's the thing that I was concerned about.
It would have to be rough. So let's say tonight we vote on a certain percentage.
Yep.
Somebody, it wouldn't automatically come back on the agenda. Somebody would have to remember it and raise it as an issue. Otherwise, it's set up to be something that just kind of tracks in perpetuity as a percentage of that base salary.
Something that the um, the union would have on their.
They might have an opinion on it.
But would they want to discuss it next year? I mean, are they?
Because it's not a union position. The substitute isn't.
But they will use it. They will use it to.
The higher we go, the higher they'll.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Thanks.
And again, what I know their top priority concern is another staff position.
Right. So they'll want to keep it competitive, but also say, you know.
They'll want both, as they should. That's their job, is advocate for every benefit they can get. We can't afford both. So, yeah.
Great.
Anybody else? Questions?
I would entertain a motion. I'd be happy to make a motion to tie the custodial substitution substitute rate to 80% of the step one custodial rate.
I'm going to take a second and then I'll explain how this works. Linda, second, thank you. So there's a motion on the table for an 80%. What we're going to do now are questions and discussion, and then we can vote when questions and discussion are closed. So if you're not comfortable with 80%, you can abstain or vote no, or we can talk it out through discussion and questions now that the motion's on the floor. Walter, do you have any thoughts? You don't have to.
No, not really.
This deep waters to jump into. Sam, you had your hand up?
Yeah, since I can't vote, I'm just going to say, uh, I uh, I would be voting yes if I could vote.
At 80%?
At 80%.
At 80%. Sam, Tim was asking for clarification. You would vote yes at 80%?
Yeah. I would vote yes at 80%.
Anyone else?
My only question was, now that I think about it, am I allowed to vote?
Yes.
All right.
This is not contract-based. This is a very specific position. Is your wife planning on becoming a substitute custodian? Not to your knowledge.
She hasn't mentioned it.
I'm going to be one of your kids.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, Linda.
I guess my only comment to that between the 80 and 85 that was somewhat discussed before that is, if we now find that we still haven't attracted anyone, can we come back and talk about the?
It wouldn't be automatic. One of us would have to bring it forward, or Julia might hear from Larry again, who says, nice try, try again. And then we could revisit it. We can revisit it at any point.
That's right. Okay. That's it. Just as long as we could.
It's not automatic.
Yeah, I understand that it's not.
But Larry is not on about it.
Do you know about?
But if one of us says, okay, we still don't have anybody, let's rethink this.
Absolutely, at any time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all. Tim?
Uh, just is that, should we just set, is there a window that we'll use for that? Or is that just something that, instead of just arbitrarily leaving it to like, well, we'll look at it if it doesn't work, like, within what period?
That is not in the motion on the floor. So one opportunity available to you is to amend that motion, to include and trigger a review in a set amount of time.
So right now, I'm just putting it to, yes, sorry.
Julia, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Um, you can keep an eye on the personnel report, and I will let you know that that will be your way of knowing whether or not we filled that position. Right? Which might be an indicator of whether or not we need to have another discussion.
So on the personnel report, all of you can see on the second page where it says current vacancies, and that will change. If it'll either continue in the current vacancies, or you'll see it then in new hires.
Yeah.
So I think it's with Julia. And we get this every month.
I guess the only thing that I would ask at that point is, is would it be um, logical just to make a motion to keep um, to review that report in whatever set amount of time?
Here's what I would suggest.
Yeah.
This committee doesn't exist after December. So if you were interested in that, request to have it put on the December agenda, just for a second look to check in. If it hasn't been resolved up till then.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I would add in, not to be difficult in any way, but I think it would be, make more sense for you to put it in your calendar, like, if you feel strongly about it, and then remember, like, December, let's look at it again, February, let's check again. That way the, you know what I mean?
I hear you.
I already have a note, is what I can tell you, but I won't preclude you from adding that to the motion if you're interested in doing that. But I now have a note and my notes from this meeting that we'll all bring in in December and say.
I guess I'm more interested in seeing what the most common sense or sensible way to move forward that is if we add that.
16 ways to skin a cat. It's about your preference.
Yeah, um, that's fine with me.
Anyone else have any thoughts, concerns? Sam?
No.
So we do have a motion on the floor, so we are going to call, we are going to roll call the vote. Um, Tim, you're okay if I start with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Tim?
Um, am I aye or nay?
Aye or nay, or you can also abstain.
I'm aye.
Aye. Eric?
Eric, aye.
Yay. Megan?
Uh, excited.
All right, Sam, I have to ignore you for this. Linda?
Yeah.
Mary?
Hi.
Okay, Laura Scott, hi. Uh, motion passes unanimously, so that is 80%. Do I assume, because we didn't state this in the motion, that's effective immediately? Sure, great.
Yeah.
Duh, I just literally said duh. Well, do you have anything else?
Um, the last item on my report is the personnel report. You can see that this month's report is lengthy. Right? Which is expected as we open a new school year. Right? So at the top of it, we have all of our new educators that we are excited, and staff members, we are excited to welcome to the district, um, who are settling into their new roles. Um, there are a few separations listed for people that departed the district during the month of August. And then transfers. So we have had some employees that changed positions, changed roles, changed bargaining units, so the transfers there are listed. Um, the current vacancies as of August 31st. Um, last year, one of the requests in our budget for FY '26 was a new position of .6 FTE EC, Special Education Coordinator. That position is still vacant.
Do we have any updates on that? Any reads on that?
They're interviewing people currently.
Excellent, great.
Yep. Um, there is one para educator position vacant at Mountain View, one lunch monitor position vacant at Mountain View, one para educator position at EHS. They they have hired and appointed somebody who will be starting next week to that position.
For the para at EHS?
Yes, and the substitute custodian.
That is a tight, well-done crew. I don't think I've ever seen such a short list of vacancies in September, even into October, it usually. Well done. And that, um, the night custodian, I don't want to call him out, uh, but the night custodian that we see as a transfer, is that, was that the substitute?
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
That is everything I have for the committee. Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, I have a question. I don't know if you're the person to ask this question to, but it came up, um, we were talking about the summer food program.
Yep.
Or is that also like somewhat similar to the weekend food program? I saw the the flyers went out again in my kids' yellow folders. Does anyone know, is that a, it looks like it's not part of your.
It is not.
Territory, those like power, the weekend power packs. Anyone know what I'm talking about? I saw something summer, but I don't know the details, and I don't think it's affiliated with the district. Program. I'm just curious. So it comes home in the kids' folders, and you can sign up, and if you would like to, every Friday, just anonymously. Absolutely. A bag of food is given to your child's. It is a fantastic program.
Jean could also push it every once in a while on parent squares, a reminder?
Yeah. Yeah. It's an amazing program, and it just reminds me of the summer food. Like, it's an opportunity. You don't have to be any income level. You can just say, yes, it would be helpful.
Sometimes you get tighter in the winter, and people might forget about it, so maybe we should just have it to like to push it out every other month or something?
And some there's fun snacks in it. Like, my kids did it last year. I wanted to test the program out, and my kids loved it. There was, um, not on school grounds, but as they walked off school grounds, there'd be some trading of some good snacks. It was a, it was great. It's just like the summer food program, it's awesome to have. But it's not in your area, so.
Not that I'm aware of.
We'll find out.
All set? Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. So we are going to revert back to the superintendent update.
All right, excellent. Um, in your packet, you received preliminary enrollment numbers, and we did this for transparency. Just looking at um, enrollment numbers, this year was a little bit tricky with kindergarten. We we hit our max pretty much at kindergarten, and we are twanging with having to open another classroom, but we were really solid there. But, you know, we have a, it's great to see a large K class. That makes me really excited about, you know, the future and keeping our enrollment numbers up. Um, and you'll see here for every grade, the number of students in each grade. So you're really just excited, I think in particular, about the K, increasing those pre-K slots as well. Um, we want to continue that for next year. That is going to be something that we look in um, to doing, particularly the pre-K. But just seeing some strong numbers, um, and, you know, even.
The grade six numbers are impressive. We often see a drop there.
In the middle, yes.
Because that's our first year of middle school now. We used to see that drop at grade five. It was the dreaded white, the curse of Whitebrook. Um, but that looks like it's recovering.
Yeah, and um, you know, overall, though, we we have, you know, I think year over year, we do see some declining enrollment, and that is sort of um, parallel to the rest of Massachusetts and in the region. So um, and on the back of the page, you have um, enrollment numbers at EHS. And we're seeing, and we saw even last year, less of our students leaving to go to vocational. I think it speaks to the quality programming at the high school. So excited to see those trends and looking forward to, you know, voca, offering the vocational, but also building programs within the school um, to keep our students a district and keep that community.
Really trending in the right direction.
Yeah, so good news all around there on enrollment.
Great.
Just want to make a comment.
Yes, of course, Tim.
Just that with all of the things that have happened in the, in this district in the past few years, with people having differing opinions of the direction that we're going, to see this is is a really positive thing.
Sure.
I think it's a, you know.
Actual data, right?
It's actual data, and it's a great job, guys. It's really.
I just had a question, because I probably haven't paid attention to this up until, but I just noticed that grade 12 is considerably smaller.
It is.
Has that always been historically?
No, that's a weirdly low year. That bubble has been small for years.
Okay, yeah, because I was just like.
Our current grade 12 has an enrollment in the mid-seventies.
Years, and it always been a small class.
90 to 105, but that one's always been a weirdly small year.
Yeah, it it's interesting that that is, yeah, so we're, we're um, really taking a look at our graduation rate and dropout rate. So that is going to, you know, that low number 73, so we want to make sure that we're being.
No excuse not to get everybody over the line with 73 students.
Yeah, great. Yeah, Megan. For that large K class, which is amazing to see, is it the school choice, or is it just East Hampton residents?
We we, um, we did open a couple. I don't know the number of the.
I thought we'd open two.
Oh, it was minimal.
Maybe, yeah, very, very minimal.
Yeah, because I remember we got that report. I remember more.
I'll bring it next.
I think it was two in K and two in one, or two in K and two in two. And that was it, but it was very little, very, very small.
Cool.
We definitely opened more at the upper grades.
Yeah.
I'm really proud of all of you.
Likewise. Can we ask too? I'm curious to hear how much of that grade nine is choice in at the high school.
Oh, I'll, I'll bring an update.
Um, do we want to talk about your entry plan?
Yeah, sure. Um, I, first, I'm going to introduce my mentor, so um.
Let's see, I have. Oh, wait, I'm so, let me, Sam, do you have that hand raised, or was that up before?
I do have a hand raise. Um, I just have a question about people.
Ding.
Yes, right, yeah.
And I, I was just wondering, I hear, um, I just get, get a lot of feedback from families about kind of wishing that preschool had more options for full day. Um, and I was just wondering, kind of, are we still doing mostly ANPM, if there are full day options for some kids? Where are we at with that?
Yeah, so most of it is AM and PM, but we have, we're exploring uh, full day for sure.
So currently, we have how many classes of AM, how many PM? Okay, we'll ask for that next time. So just get a pre-K touch-in for October would be great. Thanks, Sam. Anything else?
No, I just wanted to ask about that, just because um, I I feel like I'm excited to see the larger kindergarten class.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
One of the ways that I think we could continue to grow kindergarten is going to grow in the K system.
Solid.
Yep, and that readiness.
Good job.
All right. Apologies for stepping behind you. I am having a really hard time paying attention to the tiny green icon that signifies.
It's all good.
Interest, okay.
All right, awesome. Um, so you all graciously allowed me to attend new superintendent induction program through my contract, so I appreciate that, and that allows me three years of mentorship and training and meeting with um, first-year superintendents across the state. And I had a meeting today, so we are all together talking about opening of schools and really just learning from my peers across the state. And it's been a really, so far, it's been awesome, and through that process, I'm given a mentor. Um, and my mentor is joining me this evening, um, Dr. Kenneth Saleem, who has served as a superintendent in Cambridge and Weymouth. He's an adjunct professor, and most importantly, he's my mentor. He is helping me um, look at my entry plan, giving me advice, um, and really helping to shape me as a leader. So um, come to the stand, Dr. Saleem.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Absolutely. Well, great to be here this evening, and really just wanted to be here to share a little bit about the new superintendent induction program, which was launched actually um, over 15 years ago now. So there have actually been 15 cohorts of superintendents that have participated in that. I did, I think in some, maybe the third or fourth cohort, uh, when I began as a superintendent um, a while ago. And um, there are 28 other new superintendents this year um, in the Commonwealth. And so Dr. Balch is able to join those folks on a monthly basis. Uh, they come together for a total of 48 hours in the first year, uh, then continues into the second year with 39 hours. The third year is actually more in small regional consultancy groups, uh, where there are other superintendents um, in the geographic area. In addition, there are, um, uh, my role as an executive coach with Dr. Balch is to um, uh, do onsite coaching. Uh, we also connect over Zoom. Uh, I'll be doing uh, school visits, uh, coming to some leadership team meetings, um, providing feedback and observations, and continuing to focus on the work of advancing um, outcomes for students. And this is what um, the work is all about. It's also a central piece of, a central tenet is, is the workaround equity and advancing equity um, in the system in the district. Um, and MASs, Massachusetts Associate School Superintendents, worked with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, along with MAS C in developing this. And so it's evolved over time. Um, in addition to being a coach, I'm also a content facilitator, so I work um, facilitating these sessions as well. And it's been um, really uh, great feedback from superintendents over, over many years, that they found value not just in the content, but as Dr. Balch said, just the collegiality that develops and the camaraderie and the resources that they become with one another. I know that as I was superintendent over nine years, uh, continued to connect with many of my colleagues over that course of time, and it's important, not just for snow days, but for many of the challenges that 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 come um, over the course of, of time in any, in any district leadership role. Um, the relationship between the NIS of Coach and the superintendent is one that is confidential, and so the feedback that I provide is, is for her, and that's, that's designed very intentionally. And as you'll hear tonight, um, I also, I'll work with Dr. Balch to support the development of an entry plan. Later on this year, there'll be a report of entry findings based on that entry work, and then ultimately, the development of a strategy for the district to guide the work forward. So excited to be here, happy to answer any questions, but I know also, um, everyone's looking forward to hearing about Dr. Balch's entry as well.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have a question? We're all on our best behavior, now that there's a real professional in the room. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you for coming. It's, it's helpful to hear about the program.
Um, as Dr. Balch gets ready, we can share anecdotally that Maureen Benanda, our prior interim, raved about this program. She also was in a cohort as a new superintendent and talked a lot about the connections she made, how heavily she relied on that, how useful it was.
Well, I would say as a, as a teacher, when you get to meet with your colleagues, it's super valuable. And I know that the higher you go up, you know, especially in a small district, we don't have an assistant superintendent, so it's, it could be an isolating position. So it's great to get to talk to people that are in the same boat, and that's going to be super valuable for our district and for Dr. Balch.
Tim, go ahead.
What I would also say is that having, knowing that this um, this exists, these connections exist. Well, for people in the community who are aware, who, or who get this information in whatever way they get it, it would help them to understand that some of the things that they are accepting as truths in what's being brought forth in their, in their education system are things that. We have people from all over the state and the, and the community that are all looking at our curriculums, that are all looking at how we apply our curriculums, and they're guiding our curriculums, so there is no, we're looking in every closet. Everybody's looking everywhere to make sure that we're doing the best work we can do. And that, I think, could give some people some comfort that, you know, we're not, there's not a bunch of boogeymen in this school.
Yeah.
You know?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
All right, take it away, Dr. Balch.
All right. So in front of you, you have my entry plan, and part of my interview process, um, I presented a 90-day entry plan. And.
On cardstock in our school colors.
I'm being cognizant of that. But it, and it's funny, you know, I look back at that, and I was like, wow, it, it was a good start. But I, I really took some time to think about, you know, who, who I've had the opportunity to meet with, speak with, learn, as you learn more about the district and, you know, the, the key players in the district and the work that we need to do. Um, this really reshaped this plan, and I think it's a, it's a little, it's a little bit more concrete. We have a lot of more specificity in who I'm looking to talk to, the ways in which we're going to move forward, and the information that I'm going to present to you. So I have this little infographic. It was actually taken from um, the budget book, but I, I kind of put it in a little bit more of a visual representation. And here's just a visual overview of our, our district. So it's a little data, data infographic. Um, and, you know, it just really gives a quick snapshot of our district profile, demographics, where our students are going, um, our licensed staff, our teacher-student ratio, and, you know, the important changes for 2026. And um, Julia talked a little bit about one through the PRISM grant, and that's the new ELA, our literacy curriculum. Really excited to launch that work, CKLA, and it's going to be very impactful for our district. Um, and we have our life skills program at EHS, so we're really excited to launch that. So those are two of the highlights for this upcoming year.
That should go on the website.
It's going to, and, and as will the superintendent entry plan, because.
But I mean, even just that graphic, putting it. Yeah.
We are, we are making some um, wonderful new changes to the district website, so staging.
Love that.
I put that on my phone.
I know.
I wanted to take a minute to highlight sort of my beliefs and my values, um, and how it aligns very much with the work and the belief system of East Hampton. And it really centers around students thriving, if they're given the right opportunities, if we're meeting them where they are and pushing them forward. And they're, they're going to be empowered to succeed, and it is my responsibility as a superintendent to make sure that they have access to what they need, when they need it. Um, and I truly believe in building these inclusive communities within our community, um, that. Um, and I truly believe in building these inclusive communities within our community, um, that students need to feel like they belong here. Um, I know we say you belong here, but we need to demonstrate consistently that everybody does belong here, that they have spaces that they can enter, that they are part of a larger community. And that's very important. They need to be able to be seen, heard and valued. And Walter talked a little bit about some of the work that the student council is doing and I'm very proud of that work. And I hope to work alongside them to make sure, um, and you'll see that through the superintendent, um, plan as well. And growth and excellence requires that shared commitment. We need to invest in one another. I think that spoke to our convocation theme, that steps that inspire. We, we need to make sure that we're using data to inform our practices, that we're using innovation, that we're not just, you know, sort of stuck in the way we've always done things, that we have to look at what other people are doing, what has been successful, what the research is telling us and what the evidence in our data and what our students are telling us as well. Um, creating those safe and welcoming environments, important. You know, kids, Rita Pearson, kids can't learn from people they don't like. So we need to make sure that kids feel loved when they come into our schools. And it is our responsibility to make sure that they feel safe and welcomed. So those are just my beliefs. Those are deeply embedded into the work that I, I do and who I am as a person. And here you'll see, um, our, this is from East Hampton Public School strategic plan. We have a little bit of an outdated strategic plan. I think our strategic plan ended in, uh, 2023. So we have an opportunity to revisit our strategic plan, um, and take an opportunity to revisit our vision, our mission and our values as a community. And that is really the work of the listening sessions. We have our first listening session tomorrow from five to seven here at 50 Payson. I'm really excited about that. And through those conversations and the conversations, um, that I'm having, we're really going to shape our mission and our vision. And I'm going to be taking notes. We're going to be doing some data analysis of that. And it, it's going to be a vision and a mission that is representative of the community and the words and the values of the community. So I'm excited to leave that work. I had a wonderful opportunity to do that, some of that work, um, in my previous role. So carrying that forward, I'm very excited about that. Um, and it all starts with listening. Step one is really listening and learning. I've been, um, at the helm since July 1, but I did have an opportunity to, um, spend that month with Maureen, which was incredible, really learning from her, um, and then going out into the community to really get and listen to where do we need to go? Like in all of the work that we need, what do we need? We did a, a protocol with the leadership team. What do we need to keep doing, stop doing, start doing? And that's going to be the theme of the listening sessions. And we're going to be following sort of a protocol, like what is going great? What do we need to fix? And what, how can we innovate and make change within the district? So I'm going to be doing, um, this listening and learning through one-on-one conversations, group sessions. Um, I'm going to be doing classroom visits. I asked the principals to set up dates, um, for me. One, I, I want to meet with some of the staffs, break down M V S into smaller groups. Really excited to hear from the educators, really excited to hear from students about their experiences and looking at our district policies and our practices, because those also speak to who we are and our belief systems. And, you know, our budget and all of, um, our policies, again, our handbooks really speak. And we need them to represent who we are as a community. And we also are going to be doing some online surveys. I ran some draft surveys through the leadership team. I'm going to have the students look at them next. Um, and we have a set of surveys that are going to go out to students, to staff and to the community. So really excited about that. We're going to be pushing everything out through Parent Square. So if you haven't signed up for Parent Square yet, I encourage you to do so. Um, because you're going to be missing out on some important communication. And we want everybody to be able to get consistent messaging through, um, Parent Square as well.
So some of the
Did we send something home? I'm sorry.
We did.
We did, okay.
Yes. Yep. Um, and again, just sort of taking a look at what I'm going to be doing in the next, you know, over the next few months. Um, here are some of the groups that I'm planning on meeting with. Um, they're here, it's broken out by students, families, community members, I mean, talking to educators and staff and then district and school leadership as well. So again, we're going to be, you know, doing those one-on-one whole group, um, doing some surveys as well to collect that data. And I, I talked briefly about some data review, but what am I actually, what is some, what is some of the data that I'm going to be looking at? We're looking at our old strategic plan, our priorities, looking at, um, school improvement plans, spending plans, looking at our policy manual, um, looking at our M C A S star early bird data, looking at student discipline data. Very important. Data tells us a story. Um, special education programmatic reviews are the programs that we have established, meeting the needs of our students, um, looking at our collective bargaining and looking at our budget and grants. So that's all going to be happening sort of as I enter this space, um, through the fall, early winter, that work is going to happen. And then in here you'll see on, um, the next page, step two, and I'll, I'll report out as I conclude my, um, listening sessions and my data analysis, I'm going to present to you some early findings. And then, you know, step two of the, uh, the process is, you know, creating some action plans and some, you know, sort of early thoughts about where we are and where we, where we're going to head. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, we will be publishing this on the website. Like I said, our first sessioning, a plug for our listening session is going to be tomorrow, first one. Um, those dates are also on, um, the website. We, we will have childcare for families. Um, and if there is a need for an interpreter, we, we have the capacity to bring in an interpreter as well.
That's great. Anybody have questions?
The, the previous strategic plan that you're going to be using, you said it was from 2023, is that correct?
Yeah, so it, um, it was, I think it was a two-year plan. I think it went from 2021 to 2023. Um, so that was the last year that, um, there was a strategic plan for the district.
Who, um, and I apologize for not knowing, but who was responsible at that time for?
The previous superintendent.
Dr. Leclair.
Allison, Dr. Leclair.
Any other questions?
Um, I have a quick question and maybe this is something we can't decide yet. So it, it highlights in here that by December, that data collection is going to be complete. So we do have a meeting on December 9th, but I'm wondering if we might want to do a different type of presentation for something like that? Perhaps host a secondary meeting at the high school in the auditorium or something like that? If we want to look at that and invite more of the public to just kind of really become engaged and
Yeah.
We can talk about that off, off mic, as they say.
Okay. Yeah, happy to, happy to do that, Tim.
Great.
I don't, I don't really have a question. I just, um, I'm going to try to hold it together really well because, because first of all, I have a reputation for crying. And so I'm not going to cry every single time. But I really hope that everyone who's here will go and tell people to watch this. This is recorded. Um, this is the most comprehensive entry strategic plan that we have ever had. In my, I can't say ever because I haven't been here a hundred years, but, um, in my time as a parent and on school committee, this is the most comprehensive thoughtful plan that I have seen. Um, and as a parent, like taking off my school committee hat, it just makes me really happy. I have three kids who are all very different. Um, some of them fit in easier and some of them less so. And this is what I was dying to hear.
Mm-hmm.
For like years, so.
I can tell you, I'm so excited to get to work on this. Like I, I can't wait. I cannot wait.
Yes, Linda?
I, I won't. Um, it, it just happened that earlier today, someone spoke to me and they asked me, and they said that they had gone to school in East Hampton many, many, many years ago. And they asked me about some of the concerns that they had had over that and had those been addressed and whatever. And just sitting here tonight, listening to your plans, I feel like seeing some of the data that you put there, some of the things you presented, I just want to say that, um, this is a very exciting time to be here in East Hampton. It's an exciting time to be on the school committee and I'm very excited for you to be here. And your plans.
Thank you.
Sam, I saw your hand this time. I made a point to look, go ahead.
Appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to say, I, um, like my colleagues have said, I really appreciate this plan. I feel like this has been, um, such a positive, uh, start to the school year for us. Um, I, I feel like we're kind of entering a new era in East Hampton. And, and part of this is because we've come to be superintendent and part of this is also just because I feel like new school, we're not, we're, 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 we're far, far away from the, uh, the COVID, um, you know, the virtual days. So, uh, I just, um, I just feel like I'm just very excited to kind of be doing this with, with all of you. Uh, and, um, with, uh, sorry, I just saw my mic isn't, it's actually, oh, it's my, it's my. I, I did, I also just wanted to say, I'm finding parents where personally as a parent, I'm finding parents where who they are powerful and supportive. Much improved way of communicating. And I was just wondering if you'd definitely be feedback for the way those parents can help.
Did you catch that feedback on Parent Square, Dr. Balch?
I, I've heard great, great things from Parents Square. Their, um, teachers, um, I talked to a couple of teachers, um, the other day, M V S. They're just able to quickly connect with parents. You know, they're getting messages so and so. It morning was a little rough, right? And parents just being able to check in really quickly with, um, educators and that's so important. And, you know, you're sending your kid off to school and if they're not, like, if they're not having a great morning and you, then you lose them for, I, I know as a parent, you're like, I wonder all day if they're okay. And just to be able to get that quick message back, all right, all good here, you know, we're, it's a good morning. It's just what a sense of relief it is for parents and having consistent communication, I think, is so important. You know, it's not like, oh, you heard this, you got this, I didn't get this. We know that if you have an account, you're, you have access to the information.
It has worked.
I have to say, getting, getting the, there were three forms that had to be like filled out and, and sent back in on the first day of school. And I did all of them within like two minutes because they all appeared on Parent Square and I just clicked through all of them and it was super easy. And, um, so anybody who's having, I don't want to like, I don't want people to feel like, oh no, I, you know, this isn't as intuitive to me. Like I must be missing something. If you're having trouble with it or if it's not making sense to you, it's not working, please reach out to, to somebody. I'm like, who would love that? We'd definitely like to help you. Reach out to Jean, uh, because she will, uh,
I feel like you could set something up at the open houses too, like a little help station or something.
That's a good idea.
Yep. Jean has been incredible. She is handling both the parent and family piece, but also the tech aspect of it. And I, I am very proud of her work.
And one more question on, on that, are we able to track, like, when you send out an announcement? Like, are we able to track how many people have seen it or opened it? You know, is there a way to make sure that people are using it?
Yes, and Jean is going to do a presentation for us later on in the year.
That's great.
Wonderful.
Backing data, so people think, go ahead, man.
So at, at the risk of taking us into midnight here, I just, I, I think it's, you know, this, this presentation is, is really great. So thank you for this. Um, and now we can truly say that we have like amazing schools, um, which when I first started in city government was not necessarily the case. Um, we have amazing teachers and staff and, and seeing this, you know, we're on, we're positioned to have an amazing leadership team that really is focused on hearing what the needs of, of the parents and the students in the community are. And I think that piece stands out to me, the ability to hear what people need and be responsive to that and, and be open to that. I think that's just so critical. And, and I think it's really going to make a difference as we kind of move forward and as your tenure builds, um, to really create East Hampton as a destination of education and to really position us in
Somebody write that down. I know.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry.
I got it.
Okay, good. But I mean, and, and really like, I think that, you know, Massachusetts schools are the top in the country. And we can be a piece of that. And, and I think if we continue this work, we'll be a, a shining piece of that.
Absolutely.
And so I, you know, I, I just, I'm super appreciative. So thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, I know, I, I can't not. No, I think this is a very comprehensive, ambitious plan. I want to say that when I became a member of the school committee, there were some, you know, you work with people in various ways. And when people work with you, it's much easier to make the change and growth. So to the community at large, all these listening sessions, um, Dr. Balch is, has been amazing thus far, but she's not a magician and it's challenging. There will be challenges, there will be bumps in the road, there will be things that don't work perfectly. But with that mindset that she has for these listening sessions, this is an opportunity to say, instead of being frustrated, be a part of our solution, be a part of our, of our team, just as a community member at large. You can just join us and we can hear you and we can help you help us make the change faster and more efficient.
Great point.
Can't wait.
Yeah, at the risk of being redundant again, um, I did want to say as well that we got here on the backs of a lot of people who have come and gone and have put in a lot of work dragging the whole community through this experience, um, with them. Um, a lot of them have struggled and suffered in their positions. And I think it would be, we'd be remiss not to acknowledge, um, the shoulders that we are kind of standing on. You know, and we're fortunate enough to be here in this like really fantastic new period. And you can, you can tell the sense of, of what we're coming into. And you can also see, uh, some of the remnants of where we've come from, some of the people who have really, um, done a lot for this community, they've given a lot for this community. So I just wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge that. Um, and I also just wanted to say how great it feels. It, there's a difference in when you feel that there's a comprehensive leadership, um, and everybody has a goal, regardless of whether or not, you know, it's completely 100% done and tidy. It's there and we're all, now we all have some input towards it. And everybody's striving in the same direction, people are rowing in the same direction. And it's just really wonderful to see and, uh, yeah, it feels great. And I'm looking forward to my son's future here.
Hmm. That's nice. Um, yeah, I, okay, we're going to wrap this up. I joined the school committee in 2013 and I'll tell you, this city couldn't have put a, couldn't have enacted a plan like this then. So this is of two things. First of all, there were people who over the past 20 years have put in the effort to make the city a little bit better every single year. And some of them are no longer in that capacity, but that is the work we built on. So now the city is stronger, which allows the schools to thrive the way they should have. And excited doesn't cover it because we're in the know of what's in the works and buckle up, y'all. Buckle up. It's going to be pretty freaking great. All right. We don't have that convocation?
Yeah, I mean, not much to say there, but it was an awesome, awesome convocation. Um, we had tremendous guest speakers. We had Laura Scott as a guest speaker. We had Walter Baker as a guest speaker and we had Devin Sheehan as a guest speaker. And they all shared about their experiences, um, and the impact that educators have had on their lives and the lives of their children. And it was a very empowering session. Um, people, there was energy in the room, people were excited to come back for the school year. Um, it was, it, it was great. Um, and as the year, as we opened schools, it, it was, it was really strong start. We have a very strong start. Transportation was seamless. Um, I thanked, um, Durham Bus Company for their work with Maria, our transportation director, making sure that, you know, we had all the students on the right buses at the stops and they weren't late. And, um, dismissal at Mountain View was incredible. Um, it was a well-oiled machine. So it, it's been a great start. Um, I'm really looking forward, you know, to building on this, this strong start. But, um, so far we are moving along quite nicely and it, it feels really good.
Um, one more boost that, so I was there at Convocation, Walter was there. Uh, the energy was incredible. Yes or no?
Oh, I don't know. I recorded it.
Oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. Oh, that was a riot. It was so good. It was really good. It was a good speech. Um, the energy was incredible. I've never felt anything like that in this city. And the school district in particular has had bumps and bruises and there's been, you know, it was an incredible feeling and the 20 minutes after I had left that, I, the messages start coming in.
That's what I was going to say. Before the day was over, I don't want to say they were texting during anything, but all my teacher friends, I had heard how great Laura was and how great the day was. I texted you mid-day.
Yes, but I'm, this is about Dr. Balch.
But I'm just saying the whole day. I'd already heard before the day was over that it was like, they've never gone to like a convocation like that before.
Ever.
It was just great.
That universally. And then we had some union leadership meet with us tonight who said the same thing. They have heard the same thing, they feel the same thing. It's a new dawn. It's a new dawn, it's a new day. There we go. All right. We're so in awe, we're so grateful, and we're so, so, so excited. I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
They were not texting during convocation, though.
At 3:15, probably.
All right, do you want, do we have more?
I'm good.
Do you want to get out from behind that podium?
Sure.
Yes, yes, yes. We are going to move on to school committee discussion. Sam, your mic, I love you dearly, your mic's a little bit wonky. Do you want me to just talk about why we're pushing AI back a month?
Uh, sure.
Oh, wait, no, now you're sounding clear. Do you want to take a whack at it?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So we're pushing AI back a month because, so we've been working on this artificial intelligence policy, which is very exciting, it's very comprehensive, we're working very hard on it. The student council would like to take a look at it and give us some feedback, and we're very excited to get their feedback, because they're the ones who are going to be using it a lot more than I will, anyway. So, so I believe they are meeting tomorrow night, is my understanding. And so after they
Are you meeting tomorrow?
have some time to look through it and give us feedback, we will
Oh, yeah, I'm adding that to the agenda.
Bring it up at our next, at our next meeting.
Walter concurs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's official.
So we are not going to have the second reading tonight. We are going to take, put that, shove that back to the October agenda so that we can integrate the feedback from the students. It may or may not require some additional revision, but we will be discussing it further in October. Finance, some committee update?
So we have not met, but we have a meeting scheduled on Monday, September 29, at 4:00 in the second floor conference room, in person. See you there. It's going to be
Back at it.
really fun. This is, we are working on our short, medium, long-term planning. That's what we're doing. We are.
So regardless of who sits in these seats beginning in January, we are hoping to get everything as clean and tight and ready to rock
Absolutely.
for January as possible.
Yep.
CES update, Sam, have you met since we last met?
We, there was a meeting I was not able to, oh, no, there was not a meeting, never mind, no, we did not.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
They're, they are, we are working on moving, we have selected a search agency to, to do the, the search for the new director of CPS.
That's right.
And I will have more updates about that.
Okay, great. So Sam, just for your awareness, we're going to move on to action items, and you don't have to vote, so we don't have to wait for that super awkward here. Okay, cool.
All right.
Excellent.
Then I will head out. Thanks, everybody.
Uh, we have a couple comments. Uh, go ahead, Eric?
Oh, no, I didn't, I was just waving goodbye to Sam, which I don't even know if that makes sense.
Sam is in England.
Yeah.
Sam, did you have a, no, everybody's just waving. Okay, great. Megan, do you want to touch on the playground?
Quickly playground update, we had a second walkthrough, well, another first walkthrough. We have two companies, we have no estimates, no, like, concrete stuff, but two different groups are working on estimates of a variety of, like, low, medium, high. It's going to be great. It's ongoing, the wheels of
Do you have a rough idea from them about when you think quotes are going to come in?
I know, you can't with contractors.
I can't, I, I would have said by now, but I also thought the playground would be installed by now.
True.
We did say that. Roll tape. So it's all going great. We've had great support from the district and from parents and from leadership, so.
Okay. We're going to move you right into action items.
I have motion to approve the minutes of the 8/12/2025 regular session minutes.
We got a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 8/7/2025 in the amount of $422,308.80.
Thank you, Linda. So Mayor, if I could ask for your vote, because we don't have Sam here and Eric has to abstain.
I was planning to.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you, Eric.